I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is State Board of Education Monthly Meeting Wednesday November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And Suzanne, I think you are running the meeting this morning, right?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you. Would you mind calling the role, please?
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Mohamed Joe.
Mohamed, I think you were muted.
Gray Farren.
I'm here.
Kim Gleason. Tammy Colby.
Good morning.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Tom Lovett.
Here. Good morning.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Rich Werner.
Here.
Aleah Wilburn.
Here.
And Chair Samuelson.
I'm here. Good morning.
Okay, are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We are just a couple of minutes ahead of schedule, but this brings us to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, if you're joining us on the Teams platform, you can click on the hand icon to raise your hand. And if you're calling in, it's star five to raise your hand. All right, I see Mac Gardner-Morse, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, yes, I do. Yes, I, yeah, I sent you some written comments in, and I'm concerned about the use of patterns of strengths and weaknesses for identifying students with specific learning disabilities. The, the new rules allow research-based procedures for identifying specific learning disabilities. But the research is very clear that that, that, that this is not a valid method for identifying specific learning disability. In particular, the fact that it has such a high false negative rate. It says kids aren't, don't have specific learning disabilities when they do, when in fact they do. And it commits as many as fifty percent of the kids that would qualify for specific learning disabilities. And these are kids that we need to catch early to prevent, you know, later problems. And I, I think the Agency of Ed is not following up on its, you know, doing due diligence in researching this method and enforcing the current rules. And, you know, I, I've already heard reports of kids being denied services because of, you know, they weren't found to be eligible based on patterns of strengths and weaknesses. And just to give you a little background, the patterns of strength and weaknesses is based on subtests of the IQ test. And I, just a little history here is that they used to use the severe discrepancy on IQ tests as a one way of identifying SLD, but that was found to be, you know, you had to wait for that discrepancy to get large enough for it to be, to be identified. And I, you know, now we're using subtests of this test that aren't validated. And, you know, you know, they has the same problem. Same problem. We need to have. I seem to get an echo. Anyway, anyway. It, it takes more for these patterns of strength and weaknesses to appear. And so I think the board should, you know, have the agency really review this, you know, the, the research on it, which I presented to it. And basically, the agency is just saying, well, we're not requiring them to use it. And it's up to districts to do it. Well, the districts don't have the expertise to, to evaluate this data. And, you know, I think the board should, should outlaw this. I mean, it's not, until there's data that proves that this is a good method of identifying specific learning disabilities, that, you know, we shouldn't be using it. It's, it's so critical to catch these kids early to prevent, you know, later problems. Anyways, there's a lot of details in my email and attachment that I had there that, you know, explains, you know, cites the research that's out there that shows the problems with it.
So, and thank you for your email. I did reach out. I didn't get back to you, but I did reach out to the agency yesterday. And I am following up on your email, and I will also have it be attached as a link to the meeting minutes from today's meeting. And then, you know, I will follow up with you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate all the work that the board is doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good day.
You too. Okay, so it looks like there's also, trying to pull it up. Suzanne, are you able to help me? Because it's a phone number, and I can't read the last.
It's eight oh two, two eight nine, one eight zero three.
And I think it's star six to unmute.
It looks like they are unmuted.
Okay. I'm not hearing anything. And it appears that it's now muted again.
Yes, so they would have to hit the star six to unmute.
So maybe while we're waiting, I don't see any other members of the public who wish to be heard. I thought I saw a hand, but no, I don't. I'll leave public comment open. Oh, okay, I see Nancy Tips. Let me jump to Nancy, and then we'll try to get the phone number again. Nancy, if you're there, you may speak. I'm sorry about this. And I'm, and I'm getting no, no. Are there other people here? All right.
All right.
I'm wondering, well, okay, I think we're going to leave public comment open and allow people an opportunity to try. We also have public comment at the end of our meeting, and there's always the opportunity to send written comments to SBE, as in State Board of Education, sbe-publiccomment@vermont.gov. But we will keep this open, because I'd love to hear from people who are trying to get in and speak with us. But in the meantime, I'm going to move ahead to our next item, which is to approve the draft meeting minutes of our October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Tom. Is there a second?
Mohamed.
I saw Lyle first. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes of our October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. All those abstaining? Please let me know. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone. So we have approved the meeting minutes of our October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Thank you. Let me just circle back to our phone number and see if we have any luck this time. Okay, and the caller, I don't know if it would be helpful to maybe disconnect and reconnect and see if maybe that will help. So I'm sorry for the issues. In the meantime, I'm just going to scoot onto board announcements. So I've got a couple. One is, Kim and I both attended the Roland Foundation Conference on October twenty-fifth, and it was a wonderful opportunity to just spend the day, you know, thinking and learning and listening from educators and students. And I just wanted to acknowledge the Roland Foundation for hosting the conference and bringing together people who care deeply about education in the state. Kim, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, but it was a really wonderful day.
Yeah, thanks so much, Jennifer. I feel the same. And I've had the opportunity to attend the last few years anyway, and I find it so incredibly inspiring, uplifting, and an opportunity to really be around those who are making such an impact for our students. And to also hear from our students, it's really remarkable. And there is such welcoming space for all those voices to collaborate, and it was terrific. And Aleah was also there as well.
So Aleah, I don't know if you have anything to it from your perspective?
No, I think it's, it's such an incredible opportunity. I've gone the last two years, and I absolutely love it every single time.
And speaking of Aleah, just a heads up, we're going to have an extended student report shortly from Aleah and Addie Lenzner, who both are involved with Vermont Student Anti-Racism Network to talk about the kickoff campaign, Let Me Be Great, that was held last Wednesday. Again, Kim was there in person, I was there virtually. But it was a, again, another really powerful evening that was really well-presented and organized. So I give Aleah great credit for running such, those things are never easy. But it was really well-organized, well-run, and just really powerful. So we will hear more from Aleah shortly. And Lyle, I don't know if you have an update on the robotics competition?
Well, they initiated their field last night here in Rutland. So Rutland Area Robotics has a playing field that they will be inviting other teams to come and use. So an exciting event. It was part of our annual meeting. We had about three hundred people there. So we were excited with the turnout, and so it was a great, a great time. Thanks for bringing it up.
Well, I'd hoped to attend, but I ended up with a conflict, so sorry to miss it.
But the other times, thanks.
Kim?
Thank you. I was just going to share that there will be a celebration of for learning. Lindsay Holman passed along information, a celebration ten years of Act Seventy-seven, focusing mostly on student personalized learning, I think is sort of the biggest gist of that act. And there, that will be at the State House on December seventh from nine thirty to two thirty. But she sent me a flyer and asked that I pass it along, and I will do that, send it along to all of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board announcements? Okay. I'm not seeing our caller, but we're still a little bit ahead of schedule. So I'm going to leave that open just a tiny bit more. And I'm going to jump ahead to the Rule Series Two Thousand Committee update. So Kim and Tammy, I don't know if there's any update that you'd like to share?
Sure, and Kim, jump in. We, the public comment period closed on October twenty-fifth, and we have, as of yesterday, finalized collating all those comments and are actively working with the committee right now to schedule meetings over the next few weeks to start processing those comments and think through their implications for the draft rule. We're still hoping to try to get a revised draft for, before the board for review, but not necessarily a vote, a review and discussion, but not necessarily a vote at the December meeting. But given sort of the timing and the holidays and things along those, you know, that, that could be aggressive. We did receive a large volume of comments, but many of those comments are all sort of bundled in certain, around certain topics. And so we're going to handle these comments topically in our committee meetings. And we may, in certain instances, be inviting additional testimony and additional stakeholder feedback on certain elements of those comments. Kim?
Thank you for that. I think most importantly, we'll get a memo out to the committee to sort of outline that structure. But we really need for the committee to be able to respond to the, the doodle poll and help us find common meeting times that work for at least a quorum of us, but hopefully all of us. And this part of the process is particularly important, all of it leading up to it has been. But this will get us to our final draft, and I know our committee is relatively newly constituted. So we appreciate that, and we'll spend a little bit of time at the beginning of our first meeting bringing folks up to speed into what brought us where we are and what part of the process remains. So stay tuned, and hopefully, if you've not had the opportunity yet, please do complete the doodle poll that Maureen sent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. All right, so circling back one more time for public comment. And just keeping in mind that we will have another period at the end of our meeting. So I'm not seeing any, oh, I see Emily Goyette.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I am a parent of a child in Wyndham, and I just wanted to bring some attention to what's happening there at the school. A lot of us are really, really concerned about education there because there's no licensed teachers in the building. The school board is completely unreasonable, and they are continuing trying to hire people, even though everyone worth having already has a secure job. They hired a twenty-five-year-old teacher who's never taught kids before, unlicensed. He is rewarding children who are doing well by being able to swear in class. He is expected to teach sixth grades of math and science, but he has no training to do so. They hired a teaching principal who didn't end up working out because the kids have learned nothing since school started two and a half months ago. And she said it was because they were waiting on school supplies, but I, we're all very much doubting that. She's been fired, and now the school board is trying to find someone new to take the spot. They've been running on subs for twenty days. They've got ten more days possible to try to find someone. It's very unlikely that they will. I'm thankful every day that I was able to send my son somewhere else, but it comes at quite a cost, and tuition's really, really expensive when you're already paying for education in the town that you live. We're all very worried about it. All of the parents are really unhappy with what's going on there. And I just wanted to bring some focus to that because we're really hoping that something can be done about this. I think that for the last twenty-five years, people have been trying to make that school work, but it's just too difficult. There's such a small amount of kids that go there. I want to say it's about thirteen. And with that few kids, you can't even, like, properly test and compare it to other schools because the numbers are so small. I, I just wanted to bring some awareness to what's happening there because we are really hoping that our kids can be tuitioned out to others, to other schools because we're all frustrated with a board that won't listen. The superintendent's been shut out of meetings. They know they don't have to listen to him, and so they don't. And they've just gone completely rogue.
Thank you for your comment. Two questions, or question and a comment. Are you the phone number that had called earlier?
No.
Okay, okay, just checking. And then the other thing is, I appreciate your comment. I do believe that this is the subject of pending litigation, so we are unable to do anything other than acknowledge your comments, but I appreciate you coming this morning.
All right, well, thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. This brings us to our student report. So before we turn to Aleah and Addie, Gray, I just want to see if maybe you'd like to go first with your student report?
Sure, sure. I can tell you right now, it's not going to be as exciting of a student report. But at our school, we have our first band performance tomorrow night. And for the jazz band, we had our first performance last week at a local restaurant where we actually collaborated with both the middle school and then the elementary school jazz band, all in the same restaurant at the same time to do like a multi-layered sort of thing. So that was cool. For National Honor Society, we just had our inductions and the elections for the seniors that had already been in NHS before. So that was just last week as well. So that was a big thing for lots of juniors and seniors. And the math team had their first meet at CVU, and we also had elections for math team officers. And the only thing that I can think of besides that is in terms of like the school board and just stuff that's been talked about around the school. The big thing with our school is that for our, our middle school and high school at Vergennes is in the same building. That's, there's two main hallways. The top hallway is high school, and the bottom hallway is middle school, which is seventh and eighth grade. Like, my sister is in middle school, and I'm in high school. And there's been talk, and now it's finalized, that we're moving the sixth grade from all the elementary schools into our middle school as well. So we're expanding the middle school. This is our first year with a middle school principal. And there was talk for a long time about switching around the hallway, so to move the middle school upstairs, which was a topic of debate for a long time. So it was just, I think, most of it last week, that the middle school principal had announced he, he plans to stay downstairs, and that's what he wants to do because he thinks it's able to work. So that's what most of the school is talking about recently, is just what's going to happen with the middle school and how we're going to fit everyone into the school.
And you may have
That's all for me.
You may have said this before, but what instrument do you play?
I play trombone.
Okay. And was your sister also there at the, does she play an instrument?
She does. She was not at the jazz thing because she thought the middle school jazz band was too much this year. So she, she is not this time, but I'm sure our band teacher would prefer if she was there.
Thank you for the report. Any questions or comments for Gray? All right, well, thank you so much for your report, Gray. It's always good to know what's going on and sort of get that perspective. So Aleah, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, sounds great. Addie, I know we texted, and you said you were in here. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so basically, we're just going to give a rundown of what we're going to do first, and then we'll do it. So first, we're going to, well, is that me? I don't know, I can hear myself. We're going to talk about what the campaign is and basically why we are here. And then we're going to have you guys look at data a little bit, and then I will read my op-ed, and that'll be the end of it. Okay, Addie, do you want to start with the rundown?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, in, in the spring, we sent out a survey asking students about their experiences with racism in schools. And we got results, and we decided that we really, like, needed to do something about it. We couldn't just share the results, like, we had to take action. So we got together with the Rutland NAACP, and the Vermont Human Rights Commission, and Building Fearless Futures, and a couple other organizations. And we're leading this campaign where we hope to kind of have, like, multiple approaches. But one thing is hoping to go around to schools and do presentations. We already have about, I think, forty-five schools, or no, maybe a little bit less because some of them are students. But we have a lot of schools who have signed up for presentations. And we're hoping to start touring schools soon and doing, like, presentations on the survey data and what, and like, just experiences of racism in schools. Because we believe that, and as you'll see in the data, like, racism is a really big problem in our schools, and it doesn't get enough attention. And oftentimes, it's swept under the rug by administration, and we want to change that. So, yeah, Aleah, do you want to add more about other aspects of the campaign?
I think that you gave a rundown pretty well. Really, our, sorry, I was just trying to pull up, because I kind of want to show the website as well. Addie?
Oh, do you want me to show it? Hold on.
Just so people know where to find all the
Okay. Okay, I've got it up. Do you want me to put it in the chat, or should I share?
Can you present?
Yeah, I think if you can share, that would be helpful, because then that will make it better for other people to be able to see it, too.
Okay, cool. Let me figure that out.
And do you know how to? Okay.
Yeah, can you all see this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm not used to teams, but, so this is our website for the Let Me Be Great campaign. Aleah, do you want to sort of talk through it?
Yeah, so I can hear myself.
I can hear myself.
Yeah, this was happening earlier. Yeah, I'm hearing myself. I think Teams is just being temperamental this morning.
I think there might be feedback between Addie and Aleah, or there might be an extra device going on somebody's desk, like a phone, as well as the internet, perhaps?
I don't know. Can you hear me, though? No. Okay, all right. So basically, in Google, if you just type in Vermont Student Anti-Racism Network, you'll get our actual, like, bizarren website. And then there's like three dots somewhere, or three lines, and you can just press on it. And you'll, if you scroll down, you'll find the Let Me Be Great campaign, like, aspect of things. And this is where we are right now. So Addie, you can scroll down, because you kind of already talked about that part of who we are. Okay, so I kind of wanted to touch base on our purpose and our mission. So our purpose is to build anti-racist schools. And our, we want to do that by equipping schools with tools to become anti-racist institutions and combat systemic racism through workshops, toolkits, professional development conferences, events, and policy advocacy. Kind of just everything that Addie just spoke about. I kind of just really wanted you guys to see the website, because this is where we'll have updated information. And you can find literally everything about us. Yeah, that's kind of what I wanted to show. And so now we can start talking about the data. Like, Addie's my tech person.
Okay, here we go.
Do you want to start off?
Sure. So this slideshow is qualitative data. So it's like stories. I get confused between the two words, but this is like stories and quotes from students. So here are some quotes around regarding school climate across Vermont schools. So one student said that racism happens every day in big and small ways. And another student said, we need help because we are suffering and are not getting anywhere. It really shows that racism does exist in our schools.
Yeah, so these are some other stories. Hold on, I'm muting myself. Okay, so I don't know what's going on here, but I didn't like it. So students are, are talking in schools, right? And so students are saying, I can't think of anyone who has been through any racism. And it's mostly just jokes, and they're effing hilarious. It doesn't happen as much as people imply, and literally everyone says them. You would have to be deaf to not hear them. And so I think for these first three, it's kind of the people on the opposite Um, and so I think for these first three, it's kind of the people on the opposite end of it who are maybe perpetrating the harm and not receiving that harm. And I find, I find it kind of um. Not surprising, but, but shocking almost, um, that. People feel like it doesn't happen as much as it's implied and um. People don't know who's going through it. Um, and I think that's just due to people not talking about it and not speaking up because it's. It's just something that's super hard to speak up about. Um, I think this last one down here, unless you call minority offensive jokes not directed at an individual behind closed doors racist. Then no, jokes that we hear on the day to day are not meant to offend, just make each other laugh. Um, I think that. Well, Addie, do you want to talk about this one or should? I feel like that's a heavy one. You're on mute.
Okay, sorry. Um, so yeah, um, so unless you call minority offensive jokes not directed at an individual behind closed doors racist, then no, so. Um. I think this is a misconception. This, this demonstrates a misconception about racism. Um, that a lot of people, and I've heard this going around to schools for this far and talking to students that people think, students think jokes. Are not meant to offend and their, their jokes are okay. And that's really what we're trying to get across with this campaign is that it's not okay. Um, and a lot of people think like, oh, if it's not directed as, as um, at an individual, then it's not racist. But what we're trying to say is that. That's not true and that um, you know, words really do have an impact. Um, so yeah. Um. So here are some examples of things that are, that students are experiencing in schools. Um. I'm just gonna read. The bolded ones and you all could read the rest of them, but one uh, one of them is people have told a kid that's black to sit away from them. And another one is last year, there was a black person who was targeted with an extremely racist airdrop. Having to do with a white supremacy group and administration basically said they'll have to wait for the next time for anything to be done. And then there are also examples of people, of students saying things that are really, really offensive. Um, so this is, these are the real experience that, experiences that students have in school. And then meanwhile, you have other students who are saying racism doesn't make you, it's not offensive if it's just a joke. And this is, this is what we have in our schools.
So what is the response to harm? Um, students feel that nobody knows what to do and nobody wants to do anything. Um, more often than not, there is no response. The racist individuals never get punished, which makes the behavior towards the victim continue. Uh, teachers usually don't speak up because it puts them in an awkward position. Teachers really don't seem to have any power when it comes to that stuff. This one says, I've talked to administration counselors and classmates and it truly feels. Like they simply don't care and want to stay in their white comfort. When there are instances, instances of people who say racist things and they report it, that administration blows it off and just says, oh, they didn't know. Um, I think to put my own story in it, um, I relate to every single uh response here. It, it is hard if our teachers, administration, counselors, um, people who work at our school don't have the tools and resources to be able to. Kind of confront the perpetrator of harm um and work with them. Um, and so what we find is within these, these, these likes. These sentences we have up here is that there's actually a deeper story behind them. And it's that these students feel as if nobody really cares about um what they're going through. Um, and so I find that very alarming and I think that's just a bigger overall um reason of why we are. Starting this Let Me Be Great campaign is to be able to provide these tools and resources for these schools.
And then, um, this is the last slide. Um, so what do students actually suggest? Um, so a couple of things, I won't read all of these, but just a couple of them are, don't have a no bullying policy unless you are actually going to do something about it. Bullying can make kids want to kill themselves, stop being lazy and figure something out. Um, another one is our education lacks learning and reading about joy within minority communities. So. Um, what I mean by this is stories of triumph and happiness. Um, for example, we incorporate books that involve minority groups where their race is not necessarily the main point. And then the others who um are just, you know, having constant support for students of color. Um, support for staff of color, this shouldn't be a question, but it's given. And we need a foundation of anti-racism counseling. Um, nothing will be fixed as long as there are no consequences. So students really do know what needs to happen. And students are the ones who are experiencing this every day, so um. I think in VASARN, we feel like they should be the ones leading the charge on how to solve the problem. Um, so yeah, that's the data. And I'll pass it to you, Aliyah, to do your office.
Huh?
I'll pass it back to you, Aliyah.
Yeah, I mean, are we, does anyone on the board have any questions about the data or like anything that they want to ask?
You said, you sent the um survey to all of the schools and how many, like how many responses did you get back?
So we sent the survey to a hundred and twenty-nine schools, am I correct on that? And we only got eleven schools um to reply back, yeah.
So have you guys thought about um resending the survey? Am I remembering correctly that you sent that over the summer? Or was the survey in the spring?
Yeah, we sent it in the spring.
Okay. Um. That is a disappointingly low number of schools to respond. Um, to, yeah, I mean, that, that was my one thought is that um it would be great to hear from more people. Um, you know, just because I think it would really help to elevate the message. Kim?
I'm wondering of those schools that are interested in hearing your data results or having you come to a presentation. Uh, it sounds like it's beyond those eleven schools. So whether or not they participated, they seem interested in the results. So. It may also, to Jennifer's point, create the avenue for a survey. Reissuing that survey in their schools. So I'm just curious about what you noticed about those who are interested in having the presentations in their schools. Are they geographically, you know, in a particular area? Any categorization that you noticed from those that have responded wanting your presentation?
Yeah, um, I can, I'm happy to respond to this. So. We honestly, I, like, I feel like we all sort of expected it to be like student county schools who are pretty progressive. Um, who are wanting to do this, but we've actually had a geographic, like, um, a lot of geographic representation from schools around the state. Um, literally like, I think we have. Like all regions represented of schools who are interested in having us come in and they're not just the schools that actually did the survey. Actually, I think they're all schools that didn't do the survey, which is interesting, um, which shows that, I, I mean. Schools are interested and they know and, um, I think that's. A good thing, but again, like it is a disappointment that only eleven schools filled it out. Um, but hopefully, like you said, Kim, like you can go into schools and maybe even send out another survey for that school specifically and get the data. And help that school.
Tom, did you have a question?
Uh, I did, but Lyle was first.
Oh, okay, I can't see Lyle.
No, that's fine, but thanks, Tom. Um, and this is for maybe next steps and maybe you're going to talk about this, but. Um, there, it looks like you're recommending anti-racism counseling, at least someone recommending that. There must be best practices out there that you are either researching or considering researching. And that then having done that, will you, do you anticipate that you'll create action items? That you will be recommending, um, and maybe to whom would you be recommending those things? Um, I can't believe that your data will, and I'm not a data person, but I bet you're going to get very similar results when you go out to all the different schools. And so I think that it is a prevalent issue. And so are you anticipating where you would like this to go and what might that look like a year from now?
Aliyah, do you want to answer that?
Okay, um. For, I think that we are still in like these, this planning stage of um the campaign. I don't think we were expecting to have as many schools reach out as we did. Um, and so now we're kind of like taken aback and we're like, oh my gosh, we need to like really, really plan this thoroughly. Um, and so. I think for, for a year from now. I see us touring multiple schools and I see us um. Having schools become anti-racist institutions, um, or starting the work to be anti-racist institutions. Um. That's kind of, I like that's, to me, that's the dream is to have people even listen. Um, that's like, that's very powerful for me. And I think that a year from now, we can definitely have. Um, schools starting the work of being anti-racist uh institutions and maybe even becoming them. Addie, do you want to?
No, I basically agree with that totally.
Just as a follow-up, if I may, Jennifer. Our organization here, it's a chamber in economic development, Rutland, and our organization here is working with another organization to create. Um, a website that will have resources for businesses because businesses are going through the exact same thing as well. And so I don't know if there, maybe there is a website out there with resources already. I hate to reinvent the wheel, I like to steal good stuff. And so I'm wondering if there's good stuff out there that you anticipate being able to. Gain access to that you might then be recommending to the agency of education or to schools as you go around. And, and again, maybe this is. A couple of years down the road, but, and it's a lot of work. Um, so I just, in my mind, I'm thinking, how can we get in front of this and provide resources so that it, it can stop? Maybe that's more a comment than a question, I guess.
Yeah, I think we'd definitely be happy to share resources um and collaborate. And I think, you know, this problem isn't, isn't only to schools, it's to businesses and to. All aspects of society. So yes, we would definitely love to share resources a bit more down the line. Um, and collaborate however we can. So let's stay in touch definitely.
Well, know that you have support from the business community and, and schools, so keep going.
Um, Tom, and then I think Jenna?
Now first, thank you for doing this work. Um, it, I'm, I'm wondering about your um student network. Are you two, are you both seniors?
Aliyah's a senior, I'm a first year student in college.
Okay, uh, and I'm, I'm looking to um. To think about the reach of your organization and uh it's the sustainability and doing this work. Um, because I know that the changes that will happen in schools happen best if there's a local force behind it, um, in having people come in. So I, I'm wondering how broad your network is. Um, does it, how many, how many people are in it or? Um, are there schools that sign up to be members of your network? Uh, because I'm up here in the Northeast Kingdom and I don't know if there's any, any schools that are part of your network up here. Um, so that's my first question. How broad is your network? What's its membership like?
Yeah, um, so we. I think we have a representative, so our, our, you know, end goal is to have a representative from every district in the state. That's like our, you know, dream goal. Um, we're not there yet. And so we, we have, I think about. I mean, we, over the years, we've had like two hundred students sign up for the group, um, but, but not all those students stay in it. Um, we probably have a consistent group of like thirty, um, or even less. And so, but we're actually doing another um. Process of trying to get new students in December into the new year. So we hope to have a new like cohort of students starting in January. Um, so if you all want to share out our information and help us in that way, not the, not the. Um, to advertise our group, but like if you want to help us try to get more students and more representation from. Underrepresented communities, like we would love that. Um, so yeah.
Absolutely. My, my second question is. Do you have access to or do you know if the youth risk behavior survey? Has any kind of quantitative data on racism in schools or students' experience of racism? I know they have lots of data on um. Student behaviors um and risk factors, but I don't know if they, and maybe even bullying. But I'm not sure if they have racism specifically in that survey. Have, um, have you had access, access to that or have you thought about looking at surveys like that for more quantitative data?
I don't know about you, Addie, but I definitely did not think about that. And I really appreciate that you um. Kind of brought that to the forefront of things, um, because I think that we should take a look at different surveys.
Yeah, good, that's great. I don't know if there's other culture and climate surveys out there. Um, but I appreciate the work you're doing and stories do matter. Um, if you could bolster them with other data, that would be uh great. And um, I will mention this to uh the administrators here. And the, uh, so how will your, how will your invitation go out? Will it go out to schools or districts or how does it go out?
Um, the invitation from more students to join the group, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we are going to send it out honestly as far and wide as we can, hopefully through principals and superintendents. Um, and also we're hoping to like go to schools and through the campaign, do presentations and then talk to students and have conversations and get them involved. So very. On the ground process, but um, we're also sending it out like through principals and superintendents and we can also send it. To you all or Aliyah can send it to you all, um, and you can share it out as well.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jenna?
Thanks. I just have more of a comment. I think um you've done an incredible amount of work and. I love the slide that Lyle was talking about that has the four recommendations. And I think like, that's like the, for me, kind of the meat of your presentation, like the findings of like. Hey, you all can do this stuff. And I would love to see you in a position where you can give that work back to school-based teams. Because you're doing all the work and those are great questions or comments for um schools to think about and to sit with and develop. Within their um, their own environment. And it would be great to have, to have a network of when you have more students. That would be able to facilitate that teacher learning in their own schools because it's so powerful. And having teachers sit and this, and administrators and staff go through those recommendations and come up with their own. Because you are doing so much work, like, I want to see other people working as hard as you all are. So thank you so much.
Great, uh, Gray?
Uh, I don't think I'm next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing everybody all at once, so um, I don't know who's ahead of you.
I think Mohammed is next.
Oh, Mohammed, thank you.
Brad, Gray, please go ahead, it's alright, please go ahead.
Okay, um, I just want to say I really loved your presentation. I won't lie, my student report might have been a little blown out of the water there. Um, but uh, I think it's really important what you guys are talking about because. You know, outward racism is one thing, but I think the most dangerous racism is. Racism that people don't understand is dangerous and that people don't understand is bad. If you're looking for members, I'd happily join, I'd happily be a member and I'll do whatever I can to help your organization. help your organization. You probably already have representatives from Addison County. But and I don't know if for Gens is a school on that list of people that were presented. I know we're not part of the survey because that was never a survey that reached its way to me. But if for Gens is not at all involved, let me know because I'll go to the school board. I'm a representative on the school board and I'll tell them that it should be a presentation that happens at our school. Because I think that's important, an important thing, obviously for our school, but for all schools in Vermont. Yeah.
Great. Mohammed.
Thank you. Addie and and your partner. I'm Aliyah. I really appreciate the work you have done so far. And many folks right here have commented well and asked the right questions about your work. I'm very appreciative of what you do. I am not sure how I missed the survey. I work at a school that is considered to be the most diverse school in Vermont in the state. And that is Winnebago School District. I mean, if please make sure that survey comes to us, I'm interested in really having our folks be involved in this work because some of it is being worked on right here at the district. The other thing I was thinking of is if you could possibly think of maybe holding a conference where you could invite students and cool staff and the perfect time that could be considered to be authentic time for this could be maybe during the MLK event in January. Just a food for thought. That could attract potentially multiple people in this work. And keep up the good work. We're here to support and thank you for all you do.
Thanks. Kim.
There we go. Thank you. Both Gray and Mohammed prompted a couple of thoughts. The, I think you may find that there are boards and districts out there doing this work that need to bring the student elevated voice to the conversation. That is really powerful. And moving equity work when there's resistance in a community from even a small faction becomes challenging. And I think that there is a pause when student voice and the way this presentation is brought to us really requires a pause. And I think you'll you'll find that many boards and districts will appreciate having this in the context of the work they're trying to do, be brought forward in a public forum in their communities. So thank you for doing that. I think to Gray's point, bringing it to the school boards so that it has a public forum is important in addition to finding the way into the schools, which I'm sure you've already thought about. But in addition to principals and superintendents, the equity directors across the state are, I think, a great avenue. And I'm sure you all have tapped into that. But thank you so much for all you're doing. And to Jenna's point, you are not doing it alone. And and hopefully, it's also very inspiring for others who are doing it to lean into what you were finding and elevate that in their local context. So thanks.
Great. Tammy.
I guess all I can say is ditto to everything everybody has said. I mean, you guys are doing terrific work and it's so appreciated. And, you know, I also wanted to recognize that you're doing this work on your own time, which is very commendable. And also sort of, I think, should punctuate how important this issue is to you and other students, that this is something that is worthwhile to you to spend your own time on outside of school. And as adults in the room should be taking notice of that, which is if this is this important to you, it should be equally as important to us. And I appreciate you coming forward to State Board and sharing your work. And I look forward to sort of thinking through with you and others about how we can elevate this work and reinforce what you're doing and also sort of provide sort of the additional supports and structures through things like the EQS, for example, that sort of create practices and programs and resources and policies that move forward the big ideas that you're bringing forward. So thank you.
So and I'm curious, I'm really struck by the plan to visit 45 schools. And that's a tall order. You know, Aliyah, I know you're a senior, Addie's a freshman in college. How are you guys? I mean, are you thinking that you will personally go to all 45 schools? Or are you, you know, branching out and having delegates go to different schools? Just wondering if you could speak to that.
I think, sorry, sorry. I think that our original plan was for us to go to all schools. But I think that we have a lot more schools than we intended having. And so, I mean, we do have, we have, like, we're working with a bunch of organizations, right? And so depending on what everyone's schedule looks like, I think it'll be us going to whichever ones we can.
Okay, I would say too, you know, I would love to have updates as you, you know, feel like there's something to share or if there's something that you want to tell the board or, you know, announce that you're going to be, you know, what your schedule is, or if you guys decide to have some sort of conference. You know, we would definitely love to have updates from you guys and certainly help you to spread the word and anything that we can do to support your work. You know, I think you're hearing an awful lot of support here today. And this is, it's a lot of work. You know, to Tammy's point, that it's really, really important work. And I think it's great that, you know, this, it's being driven by you guys, because you're the ones that are really experiencing this firsthand. So thank you. Rich.
I don't remember seeing it, but is there like an email or a contact for the groups? Or do we just have email, one of you all? We have a Jedi team in our district and we have an equity coordinator, and I think it would be good for them to be in contact with you all. I don't know if our schools were one of the ones responded or not, but try to get get that information for you. So where would they, where would we have people contact or who who should be the the contact?
Yeah, so people tend to email either me or Addie. At the end, we'll all be end up being in the same email because we just CC each other. So Addie's email is probably the easiest to email because mine is longer. And so Addie, it's just addie.vasarn@gmail.com, right, Addie? Oh, yeah, addyvasarn, addy@vasarn.org. Oh, God, yeah, I don't know.
She she put it in the chat. I'll grab it from the chat.
Yep.
Thank you.
And for anyone who's listening in, I think it was A D D I E at V S A R N dot org. Did I get that right?
Yeah. And then I guess I can put mine in here as well, but. But yeah, that's basically if you just email one of us, you'll end up getting an email with both of us in it.
One more thought. Have you out to Vermont Superintendent's Association, Vermont Principals Association? To see if maybe they can help, you know, put that message out to their respective schools and districts?
I know I haven't, Addie. I don't think, I don't think we have. I think that was something that we wanted to do.
Um, yes, we actually, we actually do have a meeting with Mike McCray tomorrow, but it's about something different. But he's interested in helping with this too. So I think we're in the loop with them, but but yeah, we should contact them more.
And I would probably add to that list, the school boards association, thinking about Gray's comment and recognizing the importance of having boards and have their awareness centered around this and support from their communities and hearing this as well.
All right. So Aliyah, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, I mean, what is our time looking like? Because I know I gave us a 30 minute. I don't want to.
Well, we're kind of back on schedule. So I know you had mentioned wanting to read your op ed piece.
Yeah, I mean, it's not necessary. I think like if.
I mean, it's up to you, but I would, I would love it if you do, just because your your voice really, I thought, did a really. Oh, yeah, I mean, there's no substitute for a personal voice. So.
Yeah, do I have to put it on screen? Would you like me to share it?
Again, if you want to, you can, or you can read it, you know, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, you know what, Aliyah? I think that we had it and it'll probably be attached to the minutes.
Okay, sounds good.
So if if it's okay with others, it probably doesn't need to be put up if that's more challenging. Does that make sense, Jennifer? And we'll make sure that the written version gets.
Sounds good. So I wrote this piece to kind of launch the campaign and send it out to newspapers. And it's basically how what I, how I envision racism. So racism is like a dark gray cloud that hangs over our world, covering the sun with inequality and injustice. Imagine a canvas tainted with prejudice where some colors are benefited through the exclusion of others. It is a toxic ideology designed to judge people based on their features, skin complexion, and allowing stereotypes and discrimination to continue. Racism is a divider of our people and a divider of our joy. Its taintedness prevents the beautiful canvas of humanity from shining through. Racism is like spilled coffee on a paper or like the sticker you forgot to take off your clothes before you washed them. It is so embedded in our society that it take, that it will take everyone to collectively help out in order to get that canvas of equality, unity, and inclusion. In Vermont schools, there's a lack of action. People will say that this reality is horrible and upsetting, but that is as far as they go to show that they care. We've created a culture of silence and it is a direct result from the lack of action, support, and education. People of color fall victim to harm too often, but we cannot talk about the harm that has been done because we are told that a classroom is too, is not the place for this type of discussion and our pain is too political. Students of color are tired of having a zipper to shut our mouths, but not theirs because hearing harm be done is more tolerable and makes Vermont schools more comfortable than hearing the truth. But the truth cannot be ignored. Students of color are drowning in a sea filled with slurs, stereotypes, biases, and microaggressions. We gasp and wait for educators, administrators, and policymakers to care and to help us. The helicopter might be in the sky, but there is no ladder being put down to save us. And you say you're here to help, but actions speak louder than words. And so where is the action? We live in a state where racial diversity is merely a concept, where the population is over 90% white. We live in a state where oppression is real and not just a thing of the past like everyone says it is. We live in a state where bodies of color simply existing are a political statement. Words and assumptions imprinted on our skin that cannot be erased like footprints in now drive pavement. Yet hope remains. We can create change, but it has to be us. Some of us have been and are still currently fighting for a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive education, but it needs to be all of us. Angela Davis once said, I am no longer accepting the things I cannot change. I am changing the things I cannot accept. So here we are, activating towards change. Folks of color, let this drive you to speak up and share your experiences, no matter how loud or quiet your voices. White folks, allow yourself to use this opportunity to commit to doing the work of being an anti racist. Educators and administrators, put down the ladder and help us. Nelson Mandela said it best, we can change the world and make it a better place. It is in our hands to make a difference. So with this, join us in the Let Me Be Great campaign and help us make that difference. That's that.
Thank you for sharing that. I could imagine that that was not an easy piece to write. And, you know, given how personal it is to be able to share it on a public platform is just, you know, really a testament to you and your bravery and your commitment. And, you know, I think I speak for all of us here when I say that, you know, your voice is being heard and we want to do what we can to support the good work that you guys are doing.
Thank you, thank you.
I am in, deep, deep inside. Thank you. You just gave me some goosebumps right there. Thank you.
All right, any, yeah, any parting words or comments? All right. Well, thank you both. Addie, thank you for being with us here this morning. I appreciate you rearranging your schedule to do that. But this was really a great presentation. So thank you both. All right. So this brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the Secretary Search Committee update. We are going to have an extended executive session. But before we do that, Ondety just said, thank you all for listening to us. Before we do that, I do have a brief slide presentation summary that I put together just to kind of update the board and members of the public of the work of the search committee. So let me, give me a minute here. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. And I never remember how to go into. Can you all see this?
Yeah, we can.
Can anyone tell me how to go into like full screen mode?
You want to click the slideshow button?
Thank you, Gray. Okay, so this is the report of the Secretary Search Committee. And just a reminder, the committee was comprised of Lyle, Jenna, and me, and I was serving as the chair of the committee. And just I'll take a moment here to pause and just thank Lyle and Jenna for really going all in on this work. We were pretty busy over the last couple and a half, couple months. And really having, you know, their perspective, their background was invaluable. And certainly their dedication, we wouldn't be where we are today without them. So thank you both. So just a general overview of the committee meetings, we did meet 11 times over the past two and a half months. And some of those 11 times were morning sessions and afternoon sessions. So, you know, really, it was more than that. A lot of meetings, very thoughtful. And we were given, you know, the the charge from the governor, you know, we looked at the statute, but we really spent a lot of time at the beginning figuring out what does this process look like? Like, what are we doing? How are we going to do it? You know, what's the end result here? So I'm going to go through each of these in detail, but we did kind of lay out a process to get us, you know, from the very beginning to where we are today with the objective of recommending at least three candidates to the governor for his consideration. So the first part, this is all, you know, I color coded it sort of in the colors of the rainbow, but the first step in the process was establishing the framework. So we had some good discussions in our early meetings about, you know, what are the qualities and the attributes that we seek? We based that in part on the governor's letter to the chair, which I've linked. And all of this has been also included in prior meetings. So this, this shouldn't be new information. I was just putting it here again. But we looked at the governor's letter to the chair. We looked at the general duties that are listed at 16 VSA Section 212. And then really thought about what else, you know, that that's really kind of the skeleton, but how do we flesh that out into something meaningful? And we had the Department of Human Resources meet with us to talk about how to craft the overview, the job description, and the preferred qualifications that would become part of the job posting. So we had some really, really good guidance DHR. And I do believe that this is the first time that the State Board of Ed has relied on DHR and and they were just an invaluable source of, you know, common sense. As well as they have actually put together a manual of employee interviews and selection process, which was really, really helpful. And then we also talked with them about where to advertise. So from there, we moved to developing and advertising the job posting. Once the committee crafted what we thought, you know, was a good prototype, we sent it to DHR for their review, and we also sent it to the Office of Racial Equity, and then incorporated ad information. Again, I've linked the um job posting of people, you know, want to see it again. Um, it has been posted before, but um that's the job posting that ended up being published. The position was open for just a little bit less than a month, September thirteenth to October twelfth. And then I listed out the various places where the job posting was listed. From there, the committee worked to draft questions and create a scoring rubric, and we kind of shifted at this point in the committee process to more executive session. Uh, we did have public comment at the beginning of each committee meeting. And did receive comments from the public about um qualities and attributes that they were looking at. We also held a public comment hearing on October second. Um, again, I don't believe that had been done before, but we really wanted to make sure that we were getting out to members of the public um and and soliciting feedback from them. So all told, we received about two dozen oral and written comments, and that includes um a compilation response that had been put together by V S B A, V P A, and V S A that included about one hundred responses from superintendents, principals, and teachers. Um, and I just, I'll take a moment here to pause and really thank um V S B A, V P A, and V S A for um putting that survey together and compiling the responses. Um, that was really, really helpful to the committee. And then we, you know, took, we, I mean, I know we all looked at the comments and wove that into the questions that we um ultimately decided on to ask of each candidate. So we ended up having a, you know, sort of universe of fifteen questions that we had as potential questions for each candidate. And then we worked to develop a scoring rubric based on the information that we hoped to glean from a candidate's answer. Um, from there, we reviewed applications and interviewed selected candidates. So we had nineteen applicants. We conducted seven interviews during the week of October thirtieth. We set each interview to last one hour and fifteen minutes. And that was really set up for us to ask questions, and then we left time at the end for candidate questions. And then from there, um, we met a couple of times to debrief an executive session, and that sort of brings us where we are today. So we are going to go into executive session with the goal of recommending at least three candidates to the governor for his consideration pursuant to three V S A Section twenty-seven oh two. Um, so with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I will pause if there are any questions. And I'll post that slideshow too with the minutes. So, alright, I'm not seeing any questions, so um with that, I hereby move that we enter into executive session in order to discuss the appointment or employment or evaluation of candidates for the position of Secretary of Education pursuant to one V S A Section three thirteen A three. Seconded by Jenna. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Hearing none, are there any abstentions? Okay, so we have approved the motion unanimously. At this point, board members will leave the meeting. Suzanne did send out a link earlier today to the executive session. Um, oh, Lyle, has he have your hand raised?
Just for clarity, we are inviting our student members, correct?
Yes, yes, um, Gray and Aliyah, yes, thank you. Um, so we will leave this meeting, and I will see board members in our executive session. And we'll return when work done. Thank you. Alright, so I think we're all back. I apologize for being off schedule. I'm going to finish off this item, and then I'm going to do a little bit of housekeeping, but um at this point, I hereby move that we forward the three names to the governor for consideration of the position of secretary.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Rich. Um, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, Suzanne, I'm going to ask you to do a um a roll call, please.
Thank you, I will. Thank you. Mohamed Joe?
Yeah.
Great, uh, Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Tammy Colby?
Yes.
Lyle Jepson?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Rich Werner?
Yes.
Aliyah Wilburn?
Yes.
Chair Samuelson, will you be voting?
Yes, and the answer is yes.
And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, okay, so we're a little bit off schedule. I do see that we have um Meredith Tips McLean back with us. Um, she's if it's okay with the board, I'd like to um jump to her public comment. She was the one who was unable to um join us earlier this morning. We couldn't hear her. Um, so I realized that she's, you know, stepping out from work, and I, if the board is in agreement, I'm going to let her speak now. Um, and then we'll sort of play out the rest um our meeting today. So Meredith, I'll turn it over to you if you can hear us.
More importantly, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Alright, um, my name is Meredith Tips McLean, and my husband and I have lived in Wyndham, Vermont um for nineteen years. We have a son who is almost ten. Um, and he is a third grader, and we have never sent him to the school in the town for a variety of reasons. Um, and I am very concerned that not only are those of us who don't think the school is an appropriate educational choice for our children being penalized because we not only pay one of the highest education tax rates in the state, but we are also having to pay to tuition him elsewhere. But um for the, for the families who are left with no option but to send their kids there, currently, they, they have already lost their principal for the year. And there is one, as far as I know, there is one teacher there who is not licensed, and that is it. I think there's maybe, there's a, like a, an admin, and I don't know, to my knowledge, there's not anybody else, and that's for all the kids who go there. And they don't apparently have a curriculum yet for this year. I mean, it is, it's one of the points that somebody had made to me recently was it doesn't really mean a lot if we have standards and rules about education and what it has to be if nobody enforces them. And the fact that the school remains open despite the fact that, you know, there have been votes in the town to close it, and the last time we petitioned for a vote, they said they they weren't even obligated to to talk about that and to vote on it, so which doesn't seem legal or fair. Um, it just, it feels very powerless for those of us in the town who do not feel like a one-room schoolhouse in the twenty-first century is an appropriate educational avenue for our children. And I know that there's a lawsuit ongoing, and I know that that sort of forecloses what you guys can talk about, but I just um I just, I think you need to hear that from as many people as possible, just what it means from the parent's side. And it's, you know, I mean, it's it's a financial burden for sure, but I also feel terrible for the people whose kids still have to go there. And a lot of that is because there are people in the town who have like a cult-like love of that school, many of whom don't have children in it and who are, you know, don't have are are past childbearing age, so it, it feels very much like we're held hostage to that, so.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for your perseverance and um coming before the board, and we appreciate your comments. Um, okay, so at this point, um do board members want to take just a quick five-minute break and then come back? Um, and I realize too um that we are off schedule with Katie Ballard, and I'm hoping she's still here, and I just want to make sure that's okay with her as well.
Chair Samuelson, she was here. I am going to email her now and um and apologize for the delay and see if she can come back.
Okay, so if she is able to come back, we can take her up first thing if she wants to come back, you know, in a little bit. Um, if if there's you know, we can try to work around that, and if necessary, we can always push this to December, so sorry about that. Um, and I also realize, Mohamed, you said you need to leave at eleven thirty, so um
That is right, yeah.
We'll take a quick break. Um, let's come back at eleven twenty-two. Um, and then we'll um take it from there. Sure, okay. I need to call the meeting back to order. Um, and I'm wondering, first of all, if we have Katie um Ballard with us.
Katie has not joined. She did send an email that she was here, and it seems as if I asked her to rejoin if she um was able to, but she seemed willing to uh reschedule it in December as well, so I haven't heard back since I sent her my email.
Okay, um, so Suzanne, if you could just kind of, um, I'm going to go a forward. You know, with what we do have on the agenda, but if Katie does appear or says that she's available, could you just please let me know?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so I'm going to do the series, um, Rule Series twenty-two hundred Committee Update. Um, and this is just a brief reminder that the um Rule Series is now open. We have three public comment hearings that have been scheduled um that will be held this Friday from eleven thirty AM to one PM. Yes, that is correct. Eleven thirty AM to one PM. Tuesday, the twenty-first, from four to five thirty PM. And Monday, the twenty-seventh, from six thirty to eight PM. So we tried to schedule it different days, different times, to try to accommodate different schedules. Um, and as always, public comments may be um sent via email to s b e dot public comment at vermont.gov. Um, so the public comment period does run through December fifth. Um, that is my update for that. I don't know. Um, I think that's kind of where we are right now, so. Why don't we take up um the Act twenty-nine update? This was an act, um, Act one, Act twenty-nine of twenty-twenty-three. It's an act relating to school safety and requires the Agency of Education and consultation with various stakeholder groups to develop a model policy and procedure regarding the use of behavioral threat assessment teams. So the S B E was invited to um be part of the stakeholder group, and I asked Rich if he would represent the board um at those meetings. Um, the group has now finished its work. The agency has um produced a model policy, and I'm going to have Rich just kind of talk us through. Uh, we do have the option, like any member of the public, to submit a public comment to the agency with regard to its proposed policy if the board decides that that's what we want to do. So Rich, let me turn it over to you.
I need to be very short and brief. There was four or five meetings. Um, people from A O E kind of uh shepherded it through. There was a lot of input from different stakeholder groups, many groups that are adversely affected by um are adversely affected if there's um is, if they are, if there's an issue with threat, threats made. Um, I thought the policy, the the model policy looked really good. I think it took in account of everything that we heard. Um, not only just from um those of, that are sometimes adversely affected, but also by those that have to um enact and follow through and in, you know, put the policy into a, into action. Um, so I would suggest that if anybody, I I think maybe the simplest thing, if the board wanted to, would just say we support this model policy. Um, I don't really have a lot of answers. I I was a little lost on some of it in the beginning because I missed the first meeting. Um, but it it seemed to be that um everything that was suggested was included. Um, was included in this policy.
Thanks, Rich. Um, so board members, I did include in the packet, um, you know, the the minutes of the meetings. The policy, the charter, um, as well as a memo from um interim Secretary Boucher, and then last night I sent the link to the act itself. So I don't know if um any board members have any comments about um the act as proposed or anything to add? I'm not hearing anything. I will say, and I see that Emily, um, that you are on the call. I did note a couple of non-substantive, um you know, things that could be corrected, and so I don't know. I mean, it's it's not a substantive comment as much as um you know, I think you referenced Section five oh four of the re, five oh three of the Rehab Act. It should be five oh four. On page three, so I I'm happy to follow up with an email, um, if that would be helpful, but I'm not hearing any substantive um comments on the model policy. Lyle?
Yeah, maybe it's just a question that need to be answered today, but within, I'm not sure which one it was. Uh, one of the things you sent to us said that um the A, the A O E will lead uh the guidance, training, and technical support. I wondered where that would fall within the agency. Is there a particular person or people or department or, and maybe that's just a question for the future because it looks like that would be a significant role for someone to play. Maybe more a statement than a question. And also, I'd be very interested to know, as I was reading through this, um Tom may know this. I've kind of been out of the public school system myself for a while, but there are lots of in-service things that are required of teachers at the beginning of the year, whether that's training for CPR, training for uh abuse reporting, training for, there's just a lot of different trainings. It would be interesting to see that list someday because this is going to be another one that it it looks like a group will be required to uh oversee within a school, but they'll also be required to make sure everyone knows about uh what they're supposed to do. So it would just be interesting to see that list because I'm, I got curious as I read through it.
Any other comments?
Jennifer, I, I think I just, and I'm trying to remember if I read it somewhere. So in sort of model policy form, was it drafted with the support of the V S B A? Thinking about other model policies, do we know?
V S B A, somebody there, the Superintendent's Association was represented, A O E was represented. There was, um, I can't remember all the groups, and I'll say them wrong. Um, but there, again, there was a lot of um uh people that had worked on trying to get the the legislation passed. It was a very diverse group, and um so I think it was um, it was well-represented. I think that's why the the policy came out so well.
Okay, great, thank you. I was just thinking about sort of alignment with the format of other policies that are mandatory and then boards needing to implement and um hold accountability too. So I, that was just sort of my gut check on it. He did a line, thanks so much.
The S B A, the the director was actually one of the the participants.
Oh, I think I see it in the memo now. I knew that, I knew that there were a few different memos with different processes, so thank you.
Alright, anything else? Um, so I will follow up just with a quick email, um, just, you know, again, pointing out a couple little typos. But nothing substantive. Um, and I think what I'm hearing is, you know, support from the board um in favor of the policy. So, alright. Um, and Suzanne, um, you know, I'm remembering this happened once before with Katie. I think it was last year when she was trying to come before the board, and I feel really badly.
Yeah, she did email that she would like to be on the December agenda.
Okay, alright, so we will take her up um in December um with my apologies. Um, which brings us to future meeting planning, so I think we will be hearing from the Special Education Advisory Panel. Um, I know there will also be an E Q S, E Q S update. Um, there will be a twenty-two hundred update. Um, I believe there will be a presentation from the agency regarding Act seventy-two, uh, which is the School Construction Act. Um, we may have a post-secondary school approval. Um, and what am I forgetting? Um, Kim?
I'm going to apologize that this has been resolved and the loop closed, but I I think that there was an interest in seeing that we understood where the process stood for those schools that are complying with one seventy-three and um eligible to receive public tuition and where that process has um landed with respect to the A O E's work.
Okay, so update from agency um regarding school attestations.
Or even more broadly, however that process is going, you know, where the process is with respect to those that are eligible to receive public tuition and those that may no longer be eligible.
Okay.
Yeah, so it may be that singular task or it may be a broader update. Thank you.
Thanks. Rich?
I'm sorry if I missed it. Are we doing the capital at, like financing, anything with that or?
Yeah, that's, that's the Act 72. So I think you and Tammy are arranging some meetings and my thought is that that might get wrapped up in time to have a presentation in December.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Tom?
You might have just done it informally, but were we supposed to vote on something about Act 29? I'm just looking at the agenda.
Yeah. Well, I think that was if we were going to, you know, have some sort of formal public comment to be made. Yeah, so I put it down as a vote just in case, but I don't think that, well, just to, you know, belts and suspenders. Let me circle back to that because I, you know, we'll just make sure that that's covered off. Thank you. Lyle?
Do we have a roll currently or not with the Windsor discussion that we heard a couple of people talking about?
That is the subject of pending litigation. So no.
Oh, no. Okay, all right.
It's Wyndham, not Windsor, I think, that we heard from.
Okay, thank you.
And Rich, you still have your hand up? Okay, so that Tom's good suggestion, I'm going to circle back to our Act 29 update. I move that I follow up with the agency to acknowledge the board's support for the act as written and then offer a couple of clerical errors and omissions that I caught.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none. The motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and I think that then brings us to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, you can either click on the hand icon or push star five if you're calling in. Okay. I'm not, yeah.
I was just thinking, public comment, triggered my thinking on the 2200 update, just inviting those who submitted public comment to EQS that related to independent schools that they, they should be submitting directly to the 2200 public comment and not presume that their comment to EQS would suffice for any concerns they have regarding 2200.
Okay, I think that's good. I mean, I think as a practical matter too, if there is a public comment that has been received that affects both sets of rules, the board will be considering it because again, you know, we have, our goal is to have the same substantive language in both sets. But yes, it would be helpful just to make sure that we're not overlooking anything to have people submit to 2200. All right, Rich?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I want to thank you for your leadership during our executive session. And I want to thank you for getting us back on schedule, even though we cut one thing out, but I think it's a, I really, finally I'm starting to understand the board and I appreciate everybody on it. And I, I think we're some really great discussion. And I appreciate the stability that everybody uses and nobody gets upset and it's really cool. The whole world could work like this. We wouldn't have all the problems we do.
Well, thank you. All right. Circling back one last time for public comment. Okay, and I'm not seeing anyone. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved, I would. Seconded by Tammy, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Is there anyone who is opposed? Please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? All right, we stand in adjournment. Thank you all very much.
Thanks to everyone for a good conversation today. Bye-bye.